Member of the council, meeting to order. Today is June fifteenth, twenty twenty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I have a, I'm in quarantine. I have to ask the council's help today, second chair. I've not felt this bad in a long time. I'd like to articulate, go through our meeting today. This will be the last for the OMC four. I want to congratulate everyone on our arrival. Thank you for everything you've done to help our OSH. We go into a new directive in the July that will be handled by OMC. With that, I'd like to ask for an opening prayer from the Chair Red Eagle and a reading of our deceased's certificate.
Oh wait, Chairman. Any thoughts, any thoughts to Wakanda, Wakanda, Wakanda Yinkie? Ono de de wa jaji de, hampa de wa stopi de, wa jaji. Diada ha Wakanda, Wakanda Yinkie. Hampa de wa stopi, chu le de. Ono, ono de de Wakanda, Wakanda de de wa jaji. Diada ha Wakanda, Wakanda Yinkie. Jesus, thank you, Father, for this beautiful day. Thank you for the seasons that you so graciously grant us for our, for our survival and for our use, Father. Thank you for this beautiful day. Hampa de, give us strength today for the, for the, you know, all the business that we have to carry out for the benefit of our shareholders, Father. Give us strength today. Bless all those that are here. Bless all their council members. Bless all their health, Father. Bless all their guests here. They bless their health. Bless their families, Father, and all their children. Give us strength today and give us the mindset and the strength for our minds, Father, to carry out our business at the best of our ability, Father. Bless those that are bereaved at this hour, Father. We've lost many in the last several years, Father, due to this pandemic, Father, and other, other reasons, Father. Bless their families and give them strength and pity them for the, for the next, for the days and months to come, Father. Give us strength today. And again, I ask you for your blessing, Father. Bless those that are not well also today, maybe in the hospital. Bless those that are in the military, Father, away from home, thinking about us, Father, at this time, Father. Yeah, I got Shannon, Wakanda Yinkie, Jesus. Yeah, I got Shannon, Wakanda Yinkie, Jesus. Ekip shela, we're we na, Wakanda Yinkie, Jesus. Amen. This list of deceased, OSH indents, May twenty twenty-two. John Fugate, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Charles A. Easley, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, Green Bay, Wisconsin. James R. Ryan, May first, twenty twenty-two, San Antonio, Texas. Delmar M. Renick, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Bardsville, Oklahoma. Roy R. Gann, Jr., March nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, unknown. William R. Benson, May first, twenty twenty-two, Henderson, New York, or Nevada. Lewis J. Jump, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, Bardsville, Oklahoma. Ricky D. Davis, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, Telequal, Oklahoma. Louis J. Denoyia, the third, May third, twenty twenty-two, Enid, Oklahoma. Jean M. McKeemahall, May the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, Norman, Oklahoma. Ricky H. Cummings, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Emily L. Brettenbach, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Stephen A. Sammy Metz, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Cleveland, Oklahoma. Mitchell R. Lockman, May third, twenty twenty-two, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Dalwa Spiney, may they rest in peace.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Present.
Councilwoman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Harland? Councilwoman Harland? Councilman Redcorn?
Here.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Here.
Councilman Rebar?
Present.
Chairman Waller?
Present.
Robert Form?
Thank you. Councilwoman Harland is taking care of her bench today. With that being said, I'd like to ask the council that due to the severity of the COVID outbreak, which I was a member of, we're gonna have to follow CDC requirements and guidelines to the letter. If there's someone that is feeling bad, or the concept that I had is that you'll have to excuse yourself. I'd like to ask Second Chair Red Eagle and my Chief of Staff, Lacy Reynolds, to help us get through this agenda today. I'm a little, I'm a little behind. With that being said, I'd like to move into the superintendent's report.
Good morning, everybody. This is Richard Walk, your acting superintendent, OSH DC. And I'll begin with the aggregates. Rolls is collected. And on APAC, it produced thirty thousand, eight hundred and three point three nine tons and paid thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and sixty-one cents in royalty. Candy Creek produced fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight point zero eight tons and paid eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine point one two in royalty. Wilson Ranch produced zero tons and paid zero royalty. Burbank Materials produced twelve thousand, three point one six tons and paid twelve thousand, six hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents in royalty. Smith Brothers produced six hundred cubic yards and paid four hundred and fifty dollars in royalty. Rocky Banks produced zero yards and paid zero royalty. Sherwood Construction produced zero yards and paid zero royalty. And producing wells, there were fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two, producing less, three thousand, two hundred and thirty, which were saltwater disposal wells. Producing, I mean, approved permits, there were six work permits approved, nine plugging permits approved, and seven emergency plugging permits. Additionally, there was one new drilling completion report, which was completed by Wellco Energy. Well number is three D dash seventeen. It was an oil well located in the northwest quarter of seventeen, twenty-two, eleven. And it produced thirteen barrels of oil per day with seven barrels of water per day. And that completes my report.
Lacy, call on hands for questions from the council, please.
I don't have any hands.
With that, we want to acknowledge that yes, you will be our acting superintendent. Also, the detail this morning, I just received an email from Christina Kikonis. She's going to be working with us also on our NIGMS program and that will be taken OMC five. With that, acting superintendent, is there any other items you need to report just now?
No, I don't. Is there any, do you need to stay on the line or?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, call me if you need me, thank you.
Lacy will, thank you very much. I'd like to move on down to the new business, GLB Exploration, Mr. John Cross. Mr. Cross, the floor is yours.
Actually, I'm Brian Counds. I'm here on behalf of John Crosby. John Crosby is not here.
Yes, sir. Introduction and you represent, please, and then begin.
Yeah, my name is Brian Counds. I represent GLB Exploration Incorporated.
Yes, continue.
Yes, we had sent a letter proposing an oil and gas lease to the OSH Mineral Council and are here in attendance, proposing an oil and gas lease in section sixteen of twenty-three north, four east.
Yes, sir. Is that a three-year primary term at what royalty?
Yes, sir. It's twenty-four dollars, or twenty-five dollars an acre at a one-fifth royalty as for the northeast quarters, what we're looking to obtain there.
Yes, sir. Any questions from the council?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Foreman.
Uh, just was wondering, have you verified that this lease is available?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Counsel, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
So good. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Councilman Rebar?
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious, is this a oil and gas lease combination request?
Less than, yes, yes.
Less than except COVID methane? Or including COVID methane?
Yes, it is.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. I have a motion on floor by Second Chair Red Eagle. I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? We have a motion by Second Chair Red Eagle, seconded by Chairman Waller. Call for a question.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
I'm gonna stay and I was out of the room. I had to, there was something in my office I needed to get.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. All of our contact will be with our Chief of Staff. And we ask that any information and effort that you put into this lease, you send a copy to the OSH Minerals Council through our Chief of Staff, please.
Thank you for your time, counsel.
Thank you, sir. Good luck. I'd like to move on down the agenda item, Seaho, oil lease. Mr. Cooper.
Good morning, sir. Um, a couple of things that I'd like to bring up. First off, this is an oil and gas lease that Seaho is requesting in the northeast quarter of section eleven, twenty-two north, ten east. Um, and we, we've matched our lease request from three years ago in twenty nineteen when we drilled, when we acquired a lease that was for thirty-five dollars an acre, three sixteenths in a three-year term lease. At the time that we acquired that lease, we immediately went in, that was in October of twenty nineteen, and we immediately went into the COVID virus. So it took us a couple of years before we were able to drill that well, but we just, just drilled it. Unfortunately, we did not make a well there, but we were able to drill it and get it tested. We would therefore like to do the, this new lease at those same terms.
Yes, Mr. Cooper, we have a question from the council?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Uh, I noticed in your letter that you are offering a three sixteenths royalty interest?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, is, could you explain why it's not one-fifth or twenty percent?
Yes, ma'am. I, I, like I said, we matched the request that we made and acquired three years ago. That was the reason why we did it.
Okay, but now, you also said that, and I, and I apologize, I'm, I'm, I was having a little trouble hearing, but I have my earphones on now, so I can hear a little better. So you've drilled a well under those terms and it was not a good well. I'm guessing it's the same lease?
It is not, this is not the same lease. This is, that lease was in twenty, oh, see?
Twenty-two seven.
Twenty-two seven, and this lease is in twenty-two-ten.
Okay, um, and is it a brand-new lease? It's not, not one you?
It is not a lease that we have ever had before.
Okay, well, our, our normal royalty is twenty percent for new leases. I don't see how the two are related. Would you entertain going up to one-fifth?
Uh, we would entertain it. We were just, I just prepared the offer to match what we had done before. That's the reason I wrote it that way. Since it was just three years ago, I was just following a previous offer.
Okay, well, I've asked the questions I need to. I'll yield the floor if anybody else has any question.
Yes, counsel, any more questions?
Just to be clear, this, this Councilwoman Gray, um, you said that you're just repeating that? I'm just trying to get some more clarity on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Before I make a decision. Because anything that we're negotiating now is at twenty percent.
Okay.
So I think that's, we need to be fair with whoever comes in here before us, so.
I understand.
So if you're willing to do that, I would be in favor.
We would be willing to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman? I'll make a motion that we accept this offer, northeast quarter eleven, twenty-two-ten, for thirty-five dollars an acre, twenty percent royalty, three-year term.
Yes, sir. I have a motion on floor, Councilman Redcorn?
Second.
I have a second by Chambers.
Councilwoman Gray?
Lacy, he called our second.
Councilwoman Gray?
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Call for the question.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cooper. I'd like to move on down to the next agenda. Agenda item, oil coal gas lease, Mr. Stan Delong.
Yes, this is a whole lease I've had for a number of years. It's a gas-only and lots of problems with the gas market these days is a big problem. I'm offering the thirty-four hundred dollars for a gas lease, I believe is the, is the minimum. It's in the northeast, or northwest quarter of thirty-one, twenty-five, north, nine east. Thirty-four hundred dollars, gas-only, twenty percent royalty, I believe that's it. Got, got the gas setting there, slow BTU, and trying to get it to market.
Yes, sir. Counsel, is there any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Yes, yes, I have.
Yes, Councilwoman Foreman.
Uh, yes, thank you, and congratulations on your new completion. I believe that was yours that we heard about in the superintendent's report. Just had a question about the problems you're having with gas.
Um, well, it started out, the meter was on our location and the gas line came to the well. And now it's about a mile and, almost a mile and a half away that we're gonna have to lay a line, go into county road, and get to, to a meter that we have going to another, another system.
Okay, so you've built, I'm sorry if I misunderstood, but you've had to build a mile-long line to the, where the meter was moved to?
Well, we have a system a mile, a mile and a half away that we've got to get the gas to there so that they'll buy the gas.
Oh, okay, okay, I see. I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept this offer.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have a motion on the floor. I'd like to second, please.
Chairman, I have a question first.
Yes, Councilman Rebar?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, hi, Stan. The, you said that you used to have a, a meter and a line right up to your well on your property?
Yes.
And you no longer do? The purchaser abandoned that particular line and meter?
That line?
And now you're having to lay your own?
That line was abandoned. Excuse me. That line was abandoned, yes. Had so many leaks, they didn't, they didn't want to invest the money to fix it.
Yeah.
So your next option is down the road. It's about, well, then the line was about five miles, six miles. That I now control, I mean, I'm, I'm the one that has to fix all of those, those problems too, to keep the gas going to market.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I second that. I second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on floor, Councilwoman Foreman, seconded by Councilman Redcorn. Any other discussion? Call for a question, please.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delong. Thank you, counsel. We'd like to move on down to agenda items, John Long.
Northern Standard, John Long, uh, we have five leases.
Yes, OMC.
One we renegotiate, they have the TAD lease, and there's one well on there, and then we want an easement on one of the TAD leases for the, the disposal well. And then we have the Ricketts lease that we would like to renegotiate. And they're, on the TAD lease, it's only gonna be, we got, uh, oil only at thirty-six hundred dollars. And then on our Ricketts lease for the oil and gas is forty-five hundred dollars, twenty percent royalty.
I hate to ask, you'll have to repeat some of the last under royalty before me, please.
Twenty percent.
Thank you, dear.
You're welcome.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Councilman Rebar?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I still have my hand up from before, but since you're calling on me, I do have a question. That comes to my, I'm sorry. The, the saltwater disposal easement, is that for a well that's on one of these tracks?
Yes, it's for the TAD, it's for the TAD, and we have an easement.
So, so why, why would you need an easement if it's already under property?
It's on a different quarter. There's only one well on one quarter, and we have the easement for the other. There's not a disposal well on that one that has oil lease on it, the oil well. We have an easement there.
So you're wanting to renew the easement?
Yes.
Is, okay, so you've had an easement, and you want to renew it?
Yes.
That's all I have, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I'd entertain a motion at this time.
So move.
Second.
Second, I have a motion on floor, Councilman Redcorn, seconded by Councilwoman Gray. Any more discussion? Call for the question.
Chairman, can we get the quarter sections right into the?
Yes, I couldn't hardly hear that, please. Mr. Andrew, if you wouldn't mind, repeat that for the record.
The quarters for the TAD O P A is in the southeast quarter of thirty-four, twenty-five, north, six east. And that is the one with the two wells on it. And the easement is in the northeast of three, twenty-four, north, six east. And the Ricketts is in northeast thirty-five, twenty-six, north, nine east. And the southeast of thirty-five, twenty-six, north, nine east. And the southeast of twenty-six, twenty-six, north, nine east.
Thank you. Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel.
And thank you for calling the New York's termination. I knew that you had explained that to him, who grabbed the other quarter. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
With that, I'd like to move on down the agenda. I have a CCS U S presentation by University of Tulsa, Mr. Buford Potte. Sir, are you available for yours?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I am.
Can you see these, that right behind Paul?
We're skipping, we're skipping, we're skipping one of the items on our agenda.
Set up over here.
Do you need, do you need to break the computer?
Lacy, Lacy. There's a, go sit over.
Chairman?
Yeah.
White Palace Energy is on the agenda? Are we, we need to strike it or table it, or we need to do something with it? It is before this.
Yeah, move back.
Are they here?
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, he's here. So, yeah, he's right on the news. Okay, why don't you, why don't you switch chairs now? Sir, why don't you go up there? That way we can hear, it has to be into the record.
Lacy, back in the rating, if necessary, can production meeting?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is White Palace Energy, Clifford Taylor.
I'm Clifford, and I am, I've written a letter, and the leases I'm talking about, there's twenty-seven quarters. They have not been pumped for a while. They're out of production right now. They're out of compliance. And when and if they come available, I'd like to purchase them from the tribe. And my letter is at five thousand a quarter. There are twenty-seven quarters. Not all of these have equipment on them, and some of them will need to be plugged. But that is part of what I'm taking on, so.
Yes, sir. I did read the letter. I'm aware of the situation. We will be made prize by the Bureau of Indian Affairs when their availability. And that, have you already checked with them on the availability today?
I have not today, no.
I would get with Mr. Winlog. We will, uh, review this and take it to our council.
Councilman Rebar?
Councilman Rebar?
Thank you, Chairman. It's my understanding, Mr. Taylor, that these leases, you're familiar with them because you used to work on some of them?
Yes.
And that, uh, I remember just over the last few days, I've reached out to our staff and to our chairman regarding these tracks, hoping that we find out prior to this meeting if they're available to lease or not. It's my understanding that they were under lease, that these, the leases are not yet terminated. And this is a response that we received from Candy Kennedy yesterday, I believe it was. As she wrote back and said, these leases are not available to lease, that they're in the process of being terminated, but they have not been yet. Therefore, we are not able to, to re-lease the properties until such time that the, the tracks are, you know, have been, the existing leases are officially terminated. So I just wanted to point that out for the record, that that was the situation. And we have, in fact, have heard from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, who, who has responded that these are currently still under lease. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Counsel?
Thank you, counsel.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Uh, thank you, and I just wanted to kind of throw my support on this. I do understand, of course, that they're not available. There have been some hiccups in the past where we had great interesting leases. And they slipped away from the person that wanted them, that'd been working on it for a year. So I would just encourage you to stay in touch with the BIA so you will know when they're available and you can come back and, and make this offer again to us. That's all.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Lacy, can we move on?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to table the resolution? Or, excuse me, do we need to table the agenda item?
I don't believe so.
No.
I don't feel like it's necessary at this time. And we'll be working with this gentleman on the advocating for the leases, and we'll see what their effort is. I do know some of the other items, there is some he-cuts in this, and it's over cancellation of certain leases. And we'll get back with the Bureau on that also. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move on down to the agenda item and go back to Mr. Potte, University of Tulsa.
Can everybody hear me okay? Hear me all right?
A little louder, please.
Okay, good morning. First, I want to thank Chairman Waller and the General Counsel for giving the School of Energy at University of Tulsa this opportunity. We're very blessed to be here, and we thank you for allowing us to be here. We have a copy of a presentation. Is it available to pull up or? Okay, well, okay, printed copy. Well, as we go through the presentation, if we could pull it up? Okay, thanks. I have a flash drive if you need it. There we go. There we go. So appreciate this opportunity, we'll quickly go through some of these slides if we could appreciate your efforts in advancing, I'll just say advance, go ahead to the next slide please. So again, we're going to just do an introduction, talk about feasibility studies, background on carbon capture and CCS some opportunities that we see and then some comments and suggestions, if you go to the next slide please. Just a couple, I I'm here also with Director Singh from the School of Energy, he's behind me here and between the two of us, you know half a century of uh experience in the energy space, I'm a licensed attorney in four jurisdictions including Oklahoma and a professor at the School of Energy, also a licensed geologist and professor, Singh has thirty years plus experience in the midstream natural gas industry and is our one of our energy professors as well, just like.
Director saying, thank you for being here.
Thank you sir, appreciate it.
So continue to the next slide please, so we we we've looked at various opportunities, you know, that we we see a lot of opportunities in northeast Oklahoma when it comes to you know gathering CO2 from field operations, regional emitters, and I think that's a key point, there's a lot of power plants, refineries, industrial users here in in this part of the state and possibly, you know, existing right of ways for CO2 lines, I think there's an opportunity also to develop new CO2 storage fields and plug and abandonment opportunities. In fact, you just as a side note, the University of Tulsa is the first university in the world to be a part of the PACE plug and abandonment collaborative initiative and only there's only one other school in the world that's a member of that and that's in Norway and so we have that expertise in plug and abandonment as well in university and engineering E N S and I think that the Osage Nation has a lot of opportunity here in your in the county and in the region for utilizing some of the resources here that can really build on the infrastructure and carbon capture, which is a way that we see the energy transition going forward, so continue the next slide please. And one of the things we we think is an opportunity is doing a feasibility study for as the northeastern Oklahoma CCS, CCUS hub looking to commercialize surplus CO2 as we see the we got the local users highlighted, also regional users and all in addition, this is kind of a novel concept, they're using barges, dual-use barges carrying out LNG and bringing back CO2, that technology is here, dual-purpose barges bring that uh technology to a way that you can multiple have multiple cash flows capturing CO2 while at the same time selling natural gas and this is something that we we're very blessed to have a an inland port here in in Oklahoma, most people don't think, I'll be honest with you, I didn't think about the Port of Catusa even though I'm a maritime attorney until I got here, but I think there's some opportunities and some synergies there as well, so continue please. So we know the US is a significant oh emitter of carbon and in addition, there's a lot of opportunities for we as you see here with big business in energy development, this was highlighted by some of the indigenous environmental network work that we see in 2016, continue the next slide. Another key takeaway fossil and uranium extraction have provided economic gain for some tribes but also significant environmental degradation, loss of cultural resources, adverse health effects which have all been documented as you can see here by the publication in 2006, continue please. We think that also carbon capture is one of those areas that we talk about sequestration, is you taking that CO2 for storage as a gas, it's different form of carbon and after separating it from the oxygen, continue. In addition, CCS is recognized as a key improving technology in reducing greenhouse gas emissions around the world, which I think a lot of people whether there's think there's a general consensus, that's something we're all trying to achieve. And this is a I love the schematic, I mean they say a picture's worth a thousand words, I mean you may say this oversimplifies but I'll there's a lot going on here, you've got you've got carbon capture, you've got enhanced oil recovery, of all the images I've seen out there, I think this one really, I'm not saying that the Osage are right next to the ocean but with the Port of Catusa, you've got a lot of opportunities and also you've got a lot of opportunities in the mid-continent as well and so I really like this schematic of a CCS system that really is an all of the above approach when it comes to carbon capture, thank you, go next slide. And this is more of the technical slide that shows how you're using CCS, you know capturing it directly and placing it into the in the subsurface and showing the the reservoirs can be ejected and stored deep underground and this is a really nice schematic that shows that whole approach, okay, continue. The key is the strategies is trapped CO2 where it's produced at the power plants, factories, refineries and industrial sources and what we vision is, you know, the CO2 being transported and stored potentially here in your mineral estate and also could be used for enhanced oil recovery as well. Continue please, so the pipeline infrastructure, you have pipeline infrastructure, I will I will tell you, we're seeing a lot of resistance to pipeline infrastructure, I don't know if you saw the news, but even in Iowa, they got a lot of farmers that are resistant to some of these CO2 pipelines but uh there are certain communities I think you find in this part of this in the country that have an experience with with pipelines, know how to manage those and to the extent new pipelines are engaging new stakeholders in a way that's positive, there may be less resistance, of course you also have alternatives like truck truck and rail as well. Continue next slide. Now, we talk about various methods have been conceived for permanent storage, I think one of the more attractive things that we think about when it comes to the Osage mineral state are these gaseous storage and and deep geological formations and keeping the CO2 in in these formations over time. Continue. You can also trap these deep underground with using these technologies, the the key is the porous rock is is the key, especially when you have salt deposits and basalt rocks and you there's some very interesting maps that show these we're not really so focused on the basalts but the salt deposits and the other types of reservoirs that are in that have a cap, an impermeable layer on top that you want to have to maintain that seal so that the CO2 doesn't go back and migrate to the surface, continue please. The key is and when you one of the nice things about the oil fields that we have around the country, especially here in Osage is there's that expertise, that same time, we know what's happening in the crude oil markets, so you can also use that for enhanced oil recovery, this gives you alternative revenue sources that we still need going in the near term, well this key is, as it says, the storage costs may be offset by the sale of additional oil that is recovered, continue. And disadvantage of the oil fields, it's not always rosy, is you know limited capacity and the there's some resistance to burning off the recovered oil that would emit the CO2, but as even even now we realize, I think in seeing the current market conditions, we still need petroleum, at least in the near term, continue. So we generally think about CCS chain, supply chain in four parts, we talk, this is the capture of the CO2, the transport of the CO2, the storage of the CO2 and the utilization of the CO2. Uh I think there's a lot of technology being developed on the capture and the transport, as an attorney, I will tell you, just to give you an update on some of the deals, in Texas and Louisiana have, you may have seen in the news, signed significant deals with it comes to carbon capture. I was not involved in negotiations but as a member of the A I N task force, one of the things I've learned when it comes to carbon capture and storage, I'm on their task force, the deal point that really got the state of Texas and Louisiana able to reach an agreement on their carbon capture and storage developments was, the deal point was who assumes liability after a certain point and after operations have ceased, both states, Louisiana and Texas agreed to assume assume the liability of the emissions of the CO2 after operations, you know, permanent permanent liability for the storage, so that's kind of a a big deal point, who assumes that liability and at one point, of course utilization is also an alternative but the deal points, I'll be honest with you, the deal points are still being worked out. Those deal points haven't always been put into paper, but one of the nice things I'll tell you about at TU is I was a member of A I N, I I get to hear and I'm also on the development of, we're working on the development of these standard agreements on carbon capture and storage, so we're in the room putting together the major terms that relate to how these terms and conditions, whether it's the financial or the liability are in these standard agreements going forward, so continue the next slide please. So how it works, this is the key, another slide, basically showing the the basic mineral reaction with the CO2 that's in dissolved and trapping in in the physical space, this is a really nice schematic, we'll go on to the next slide. You say, well, has this been done, well, CCUS has been applied in wide range of industries since nineteen seventy-two. One of the most famous is the Valverde area at Texas, which has employed carbon capture and CO2 for enhanced oil operations, they've for more than they've since then, two hundred million tons of CO2 have been captured and injected in the deep underground, continue the next slide. So here's an example of a sub-surface storage complex, this is kind of like if you if you were transporting this schematic to this part of the world, you could see you get the refineries down in Tulsa, other industrial users in the area, there's a lot of economic growth here and using that CO2 to help with your enhanced oil recovery operations and other industrial uses as well, continue please. These are the oil fields with favorable to CO2 enhanced oil recovery, you can see we're right here in the middle of that area. This is a a really important slide, you want to be in an area that favors CO2 and enhanced oil recovery operations if you're going to consider this type of uh work, continue please. And the first opportunity we we've looked at is a DOE, carbon safe phase two opportunity, that that's something that I think we best park that one for now, but there are always other opportunities with a DOE and we would look forward to working with you going forward on any DOE opportunities on on carbon capture, but I think also there are other opportunities that we see coming down the road that may provide some commercial opportunities for the Osage Nation and the Mineral Council when it comes to CCUS, continue the next slide. And I also want to point out, there's some opportunities in the infrastructure, bipartisan infrastructure and jobs act and we'll talk about enhanced petroleum recovery, let's go on the next slide. So you remember last year, the bipartisan infrastructure act passed by Congress, signed by the President, it created a grant program to support utilization of carbon capture and new products, it also creates a program of loan guarantees and grants expand to expand pipelines that transport carbon capture to sites to be utilized. As I pointed out, these type of pipelines have run into resistance in certain parts of the country like Iowa, it creates a new program aimed at supporting large scale commercialization of carbon capture technologies and also amendments to the permitting process and that's key, amendments to the permitting process, that regulatory piece is really important for capturing carbon capture and sequestration projects, not only in the Gulf of Mexico or our continental shelf, but also onshore like we have here in in Oklahoma, continue please. In addition, it also amends the internal revenue code, this is really important, I think is and Professor Singh can really speak to this, there's really some important tax benefits for carbon capture and allowing bonds to proceed use for these carbon capture projects, also authorizes federal support for four regional hubs to direct this technology to be captured and also this is the key, puts money behind the bill, four point six billion over five years to support carbon capture pilot and demonstration projects, which we would think this is something that the Osage Nation and Mineral Council might be interested in doing. So in conclusion, we ask consideration by the Osage Mineral Council and the sovereign Osage Nation to evaluate opportunities that CCS and CCUS may present for the tribe and one more I think we have, and we just thank you for your time and we welcome your comments and just suggestions how we can help you with your CCS and CCUS efforts, because we're here to serve you and we're thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Director Singh, Director Singh may have an additional comment or two, I think.
I would like to hear from him at this time please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um there was, in terms of carbon capture and sequestration, carbon capture utilization and storage, we've moved from the theoretical to the practical, this this is happening, it's happening in West Texas in those oil fields. We have talked, there's an engineering firm in Tulsa that does these uh the infrastructure, um there is a company out of Houston that also currently has CO2 pipelines, they're going to now move into carbon capture, sequestration and utilization in the Haynesville area. So really, uh our thought process is how do we move from theoretical to practical in northeast Oklahoma? Part of my background, I worked for two different natural gas pipeline companies that are in Oklahoma, specifically assets in northeast Oklahoma, including Osage County, um so my background in that, I mean you are now talking about instead of shipping methane, you're talking about shipping a gas, CO2 and then Chairman Waller, as I recall, in a conversation we had with the Professor Palet, you were the potentially interested in in the use of the CO2 for enhanced oil recovery and so I started put looking at literally assets in the area, you your situation, the Osage Nation situation is very unique in that I I see you potentially as having infrastructure, obviously, things like orphaned wells that can be used for sequestration. I don't know the status of your storage facility that One Oak used to lease, that represents a potential point for sequestration and or a sort of a housing for the CO2 to then be distributed through the fields in Osage County. As Professor Palet, I think everyone aware, there's two refineries in Oklahoma that are huge emitters, right there in Tulsa, Public Service Company of Oklahoma has power plants, I've had discussions with Grand River Dam Authority, you know, they have plants in the prior area that are emitters. So this is a this is a down the road thing, but we sort of do have a vision that there could be sort of a um common infrastructure, a regional, truly a regional hub to capture CO2 and then basically store it and or transport it to wherever there might be a need and obviously the EOR is is a major need, but I I in those slides, we've identified companies like Air Liquide and Air Products who actually use CO2 as a commercial product that they sell to the others. So this is just sort of a, here's here's our thoughts and we appreciate it very much if you all would kind of come back to us with what you see your needs might be in terms of carbon capture and sequestration or carbon capture and utilization of storage. I've had discussions with our engineering school at TU and we would be more than happy if you wished to have a follow-up discussion to get into more of those particulars. But for today, we very much appreciate you allowing us to come and speak.
Thank you Professor, Counsel, do we have any questions?
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes, thank you and gentlemen, I appreciate you coming and spending the time to put this uh presentation together. Our visions are in lockstep, we've been working on this for over a year or longer. We have identified the carbon emissions all around Osage, surprisingly, according to EPA, there aren't that many in Osage County, but there's lots in less within less than a hundred miles around Osage County, we are very interested and have a lot of work to do, we are going to need a lot of technical and professional help in this, however, we you know, we've been working on this for a while, we are of a we've applied for a grant to do a feasibility study to look at look at to compare what we think we can get out of the ground with the cost of of piping in CO2 already. We're just waiting on on that grant to be awarded, hopefully, cross your fingers, hopefully it will and you know, once that is awarded and in place, we can start the work of looking into the feasibility of this already, but I'm I'm glad you're interested and I'm glad you have the expertise. I've learned several things from your presentation, um you know, and something certainly that in the future that the Minerals Council will need to consider, so uh tha- thanks again for your presentation, uh we we feel like we have a lot of opportunity, but there's a lot of work that has to go go into this before we can even get to putting together a real project.
Sure, thank you Counsel, and if I could, just one other comment, the uh there there are the federal tax credits, forty-five Q for projects that will basically represent CCS and so to the extent the extent that down the road there's infrastructure that. to the extent, the extent that down the road, there's infrastructure, that these, then those companies that can build that infrastructure can take advantage of those as well. But thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Lacy, do we have any other questions?
Councilman Redcorn?
I'm Chairman Redcorn. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this presentation. You're bringing out a lot of areas I think we can look into. I sponsored a big effort to lean heavily on utilization. We've got some, a lot of opportunity in those states to capture, utilization, to help. And then our consultants are telling us, that's where the bang for the buck for the other states is, that puts us above everybody else, and that everybody's trying to carbon capture and storage and pay for it. However, in the Osage, it's carbon capture. We've got a lot of places where we've shown by engineering study that utilization is going to help bring the dollars toward carbon capture. So we're, we're way down the road. I've sponsored that work for the last two, three years. So love to talk to, what we're seeing is, is a possibility of maybe being that type of hub where we're, and I would like to kind of bring in the R-Buckle. We've got the R-Buckle, all the link, it's right above the granite, and we've a lot of conversations. I've gone to University of Houston Carbon Capture, Utilization, Storage Conference from the American Association of Petroleum Geologists, and there were just some excellent technical presentations down there. I had to reach Slumber Jay, some of the folks in major universities. I think you guys are hitting square on the head when it comes to hub. I think we'd love to explore that a lot and fully. One thing you brought up that kind of piqued my interest is the Katusa waterway. And I used to work down in that area. I guess, how, tell me, how can we benefit from that? That's an interesting notion, and that's the first I would bring up.
Well, it's, it's, it's kind of like the moonshot. If I can be honest with you, it's like the moonshot approach. You know, it's one of those pipe dreams. Sometimes you swing for the fence, and sometimes you miss. So I'm not going to paint it as something completely Roosevelt. I am an maritime attorney. When I first got here, I sold Port Katusa. And if you put a map of the inland waterways, I just think that, of course, there's, there's other opportunities, I think, with other companies maybe working together in other nations to, to maximize the benefits. Because my view is, why just carry out corn or gravel or whatever, when you can carry higher dollar, higher revenue products like natural gas, bringing in CO2, those type of things gives you access to other markets. And you, the key thing is, you're avoiding the fight over the pipelines. Because pipelines are generally one of those things that create problems, I think, with stakeholders. You have to cross a lot of, you have to deal with a lot of landowners. While if you're dealing with a maritime waterway, you're just dealing with Coast Guard and...
We have, Ms. Gray that did a lot of work on hydrogen.
Right.
And the CCUS work we've done, realized that we can, with potential bug use, we can produce hydrogen on the front end, and then switch over to production. So maybe not so much CC, or CO2 transport, some of these other, more high value.
High value, a little bit higher than that. And the, and the key thing is, you know, I am, well, you always have to have mentors here, advisors have mentors. My first mentor at work said, I know you're an energy attorney, but you could be a maritime attorney for me. Thank you, God, for that, because that's one of those, when you see opportunities like the Port Katusa, it is a moonshot. But I think it's one of those things that, it was built. I, I like the vision, you know, it was built in the 70s under Nixon administration. And that vision of the port, why not take it to the next level?
Yeah, I, I understand the moonshot comment, because that's what we did. And we found revenue, not in the millions, but billions and all.
I just wanted to say that...
Probably revenue like that.
Yeah. And the other, the other thing too is that, and part of the reason, because like I said, my, my background initially was, was pipeline operations. And, and just, just looking at the natural gas pipeline grid we have in this part of the state, you have existing rightaways. Now, it's, it's up to those pipelines to tell us if they are multi, multi-use or not. What is that rightaway lease? That, to me, is the big key, because it doesn't, now it does measure which direction you want to go with that, the CO2 or potentially the hydrogen. You have a rightaway that's, all right, so we're not going to be running across and having potential land issues with, with landowners.
Man, that's, I'm glad you're bringing that. One last comment, Chairman, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of this study and review, on the theoretical side, one kilometer deep comes to mind. So as we press forward, I want TU to understand, and I've got some results that show, we want to get stuff off the list that don't meet that prior criteria quickly. I don't want to spend two years on an area that will never, how, will never, my pressure of death contains liquefied or dense CO2, is what I call it.
Right, right, right.
So I, I just caused, I've got a map I could show you. It's kind of on the other side of the reservation, and then opportunities on the east, that's going to be an added challenge there. And I think there's another study, and I think you've shown that on presentation, somebody did it. I just able to grab the map, one map, as they showed it worldwide, what they're doing here. Yeah, so I'm saying, we're, this, there's a lot going on in this game.
Yes.
But we are on top of it, too. We'd love to, I think the hub is probably a direction we might need to go. Thank you, Chair.
And if I can address the hydrogen, you know, there's that memorandum of understanding among Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Louisiana. And then, so then the designated universities are LSU, University of Arkansas, and the University of Tulsa. So our engineering department is also involved in that, and they're working with the state. So if there's ever anything that we can help with the hydrogen situation, or keeping you on top of how that, and I think that hub thing of hydrogen is way down the road, but that's just me. You have to have a total infrastructure change.
I mean, hub for CO2 is very real, where we're at now.
I think so.
Because we've got, we've already proven by engineering study, we've got a lot of locations that, that can...
Sure. Well, then again, because I worked at One Oak, and I'm familiar with the, the storage facility as well as their, so you have transmission, natural gas transmission rightaway coming right up to, to the facility there in southeast Osage County. So, you know, to me, again, to the extent that you're looking at EOR, and, and you don't capture enough for your own usage, well, is there a way to get CO2 there? And then we just...
That's where we're at.
There you go. Yeah, so, okay.
You know, thank you for the, I know everyone's getting all excited about this. I never thought I'd be like, oh my gosh, I'm just like, so excited over Matt. But you know, this is what we have, we've been working for, gosh, three years easily. We've had the DEMD up in Lakewood, which is a, are you familiar with DEMD?
No.
Okay. So under the interior, they have BIA, and then BIA, they have what they call their technical, their energy service center, and the Division of Energy Minerals Management Division, they are the ones that we write, they're the ones who award the grants. And they also do TED C grants, too. So, but what Ms. Foreman had said, and Mr. Redcorn and myself, and we've all applied for different degrees of, of grants. Mine was hydrogen, the overall picture, to do, have a study. We've already had an initial study in market then. And then, even then, with each one of the grants, we have the carbon capture and storage and the CCUS. So we were well knowledgeable about what's going on. And to me, I always follow the money with Department of Energy, that they are, had the opportunity to meet with them in, at a recent conference. And we know that there's a certain amount of money that is going to the states. There's also that 4.6 million, billion. And then there's other monies that are available, and the 45-Q too, as well. So there's all these different areas, pockets. But I say, don't wait until we hear back from those grants. Start laying the groundwork now. I, I really urge, you know, my colleagues here to, to, because I think it's something that can already start being in place and forming those relationships.
No, I agree. Yeah, I'm, I'm one of those people, these are the first to market wins, you know, those who move forward.
Exactly right.
Yes.
Yeah. If we don't want to sit there, then, I always use this analogy when in Osage County, it's like, it seems like the Mineral Council, it's always that we're the last to the table on some, on some national things or issues that we should be advocating for in DC for monies and changes that are needed here. But it's like, we, it's like Friday night, it's a cake party, and we're the last ones there, and they've already called the police. And so we don't want it to be like that. We want to be on the front end on the planning.
Well, you've already, obviously, already done a lot, and you are down the road a lot further than a lot of entities, including our university, in terms of you've gone out and looked in detail. Of course, you do it from the perspective of your own assets and things, which is great.
Yeah.
One thing, Chairman, you might have to pipe in this, call it?
Yes, and then we'll wrap it up.
Just a, one comment on hydrogen. We're also a member of the AIN Hydrogen Task Force. My next meeting on that is next week. And I will tell you that that group is nascent. They're really kicking off, trying to figure out what they're wanting to do. I can tell you, as of this point, there's no, there's, there's nobody at that table representing any of the sovereign nations here in the native peoples here.
Were you on the task force that wrote that? The, thank you, sir. Were you on the task force that wrote the, it's like 110-page hydrogen study? Do you know Matt Newman?
No, I don't.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you know Matt. All right. So, you know, if you can't beat him, join him. So anyway, we got Matt. He's on our, he's written in part of the grant that, you know, that has to do with the Haylo project.
Okay.
So on the hub. But I am, I agree that, that hub for, you know, CCS and CCUS is, is, that'll, it's very viable.
Tremendous capacity on their own.
And that's, and that's something like, that's happened far before this hydrogen hub. I mean, that's so far down the road.
Well, also, the tribes...
But the money's there.
Yeah. Well, the, the tribes are getting ready. In fact, I know tomorrow, there's a, they're talking about doing our own hub, the tribal hub for hydrogen. So that's, I'll send you that information.
Thank you, Counsel.
Second Chair, Red Eagle's hands up, and I have a chairman that has a question as well.
I just have one, a small, one small question. The Valverde area, is that West Texas?
The South Texas, yes, South Texas, yeah.
Okay.
Lacy, I just have one comment. The, before we get to the question, on the actual storage element, which will hold billions of cubic feet, we have plugged all the monitoring wells. As Professor Singh knows, that, that availability for that process, also that Holly Farnes would be interested, last comment, and just a visit with them. I think that also we look at the hub element, which Counsel was just brought up. The EOR is exciting news to me. What the other comment I have is that we're probably visiting with Chief Hopskis on a spur element, and maybe nation to nation. With that being said, please go to the question.
I'm stepping here for the record. I need to know, there's been a study done with CO2 injection, if there'll be an impact on the water, water zones. Is there a study out there?
I don't have it, but yes. They're, they're doing this in northwest Louisiana, in the Haynesville shale area. And so they definitely, they have to have an impact study. That's something that we can circumvent. But yes, yes.
I would like to, you know...
Yeah, because I'm with you. I, I don't want to see it.
I have a farming home on the west side, you know, pretty close to all this...
Yes, ma'am.
...business. And I would like to know about the impact on the water.
Yes, we want, definitely, yeah, that, that would be part of any feasibility study, most definitely. You have to.
Thank you, Counsel. Lacy, I'd like to move on with my agenda.
Thank you.
Chairman, Counsel, thank you.
Appreciate you much.
Appreciate it.
The next item is executive.
I'd like to entertain the motion to go into executive.
So, ma'am.
Second, I have a motion on floor by Second Chair Red Eagle, Second Attorney Counselman Redcorn. Call for the question, please.
Councilman Reddigan?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Reddigan?
Yes.
Second Chair Reddigan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Lacy, is Mr. Knapp available?
Um, yes.
Let's talk to the right chair.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'd like to take a 10-minute break. The council is...
Recording stopped.
Please be back at 11:15.